Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 26th Board of Education meeting. If you could please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. James is absent this evening, so our Vice President will take over secretarial duties. Mike, could you take attendance, please?
I will.
President McDonough?
Here.
Press President Aldrich here. Secretary Summers, absent. Treasurer Whitney?
Here.
Trustee Gibson?
Here.
Trustee Atchison?
Here.
Trustee Camione?
Here.
Thank you. Any changes to the board agenda? I have none. All right. Scheduled public comment, we have one this evening. Marissa?
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a little timer adjustment.
Okay.
As a reminder, it is still three minutes until we implement our policy for five. Good?
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So, first off, I attended the Policy Committee meeting where the discussion took place about going to five minutes on public comment, and I thought it was a really good discussion. I can't see any drawbacks on that, so that sounds really good to me for scheduled and unscheduled. I have a friend who's been in township government for over a decade, and she's always telling me how the most important part of her job is hearing from her constituents and how important that is to her, how much that matters to her, so I know it's the same for you guys. So, I think that that would be good, and I look forward to that vote tonight on that policy. And then, secondly, culture of safety from the strategic plan. I'd like us all to really think about that and what that means. From what I've understood about a culture of safety, and for us to achieve it here, it really requires open, honest, transparent communication and not having, like, sudden unexpected changes that catch people off guard. So, the example I'll give is the relocation of the weapons detection canine away from Oxford High School and moving this canine to, like, a different campus and not letting parent, high school parents, know about that change ahead of time. So, a culture of safety would require us to communicate that change and explain that change so we could expect that change, and we could prepare for that change and understand that change. And none of that occurred, and I continue to struggle with it. So, tonight, when we have the safety presentation, even though the canine is not listed on the slide from what I saw, I'm not sure why, I'm hoping to understand the percentage of time we can expect the canine to be at the high school, given that the most threat assessment, the data shows us that that's where the most threat assessments are taking place and all the building activity taking place after hours. That's where, as a high school parent, I would expect that asset to be a majority of the time as opposed to, like, a smaller campus. So, as we think about a culture of safety, that's just one example of something that I hope to see discussed. That's it.
Thank you, Marissa. All right. Item four, our consent agenda. We have minutes, excuse me, bills payable and HR updates. I was informed, just in case anyone else had noticed, that the purchase card from BMO Harris wasn't listed on the register this month. It was a timing issue with when the account closed, so it will be on next month. With that said, would anybody like to make that motion? Mike?
Move to approve the... Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Mike Whitney, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, our superintendent's report. Dr. Milligan.
Good evening, everyone. Let me see. Erin? Oh, there it is. Thank you. So, first of all, I want to say thank you to the board for their support. We're shifting the superintendent update a little bit, so my goal is to uplift and highlight many of the amazing things going on across the district, so that's kind of my portion of the update is highlights. And then, we're pulling out specific presentations that speak to more in-depth concepts, so you'll see three separate presentations after my highlights. So, I appreciate my colleagues in doing that work and lifting those important concepts up. The second thing I just want to remind us, before I share those highlights, I want to ground us again in our vision, empowering learners, building community, and inspiring futures. It's been really fun over the past few days that we've been in school. I'll have people, like, just randomly yell this vision at me. I'll just be walking down the hall, they'll be like, "Dr. Milligan, we're empowering learners." So, it's just really, really cool that people have embraced this. It's that level of ownership we're always hoping for. Also, our mission calling us, calling us to create a safe, supportive, and opportunity-rich environment where every learner belongs, grows, and is prepared to contribute to our community. We are guided by our core values, empowerment, belonging, integrity, and innovation, and every decision we make moves us closer to that goal. With that in mind, here are some awesome updates. It's been a very, very busy week in Oxford coming back to school. So, here are some highlights I'm going to talk about. First, I'll talk about how our staff has engaged in exploring the new strategic plan. You also get a chance to see some of our teachers talk about their hopes and dreams. I'll share some insight from the AI professional development that we did in-house with our own experts, and the fact that we just started this about nine months ago really speaks to not only the enthusiasm for AI, but also the willingness to grow and learn collectively. Well, I'll share information in terms of the Welcome Back event, which is really great, some back-to-school events, and sharing voting information that we've been able to do over the past week and a half. Of course, our first day of school, and then, drumroll, please, our stadium field update. That is really exciting. So, let me get started. So... So, our staff came back and they had a video that they watched in terms of the strategic plan and the components of the strategic plan. I don't necessarily want to show it here because you guys are very familiar with the strategic plan and the structure, but what I wanted to share was the voices of our teachers that were, you know, throughout the video, they shared their thoughts, ideas, so I do want to share that, so if you guys can start the video.
So, for me, the most special part about Oxford is it feels like home. I mean, I grew up here. I lived in the village, was born and raised there. I went to Daniel Gaster Elementary. I got the job here. I had a lot of my former teachers who were still teaching in that time, and it's really carried over for me. Oxford's all there.
Artister gives amazing opportunities academically, athletic, performing arts, even into college, but still, it's a district with that hometown feel, and it's a wonderful community.
I think our district is unique and special because of the strong sense of community. I don't think that's a given in other districts. I think that's something that we should be proud of. I also think it's extremely important to note that Oxford has a lot of teachers who are Oxford graduates.
The staff and students within our district and community make our district so special, and I think the connectedness that we share, we're really able to get to know students not just within our classrooms. We get to see them often in halls, greet them, get to know them. We see them at sporting events, different events within the community, and so being able to make those connections with students throughout is so special.
What makes our district special? Definitely the people. We have a combination of staff, students, administrators, parents, families, and we all come together and put the best interests of the child first, and it's such a pleasure to work here and come to work every day where everyone has the same goal.
My hope for Oxford Community Schools is that we continue to be a place where every student is challenged and supported and inspired. As we continue to build this framework together, I hope that we create something that holds on to the best of what we have, rigor, curiosity, and a shared vision. Whatever we build, I hope that our learners leave Oxford as critical thinkers, as problem solvers, so wherever they go, they can look back and they can think, "Oxford gave me the tools to do this."
My hopes and dreams for the future of Oxford Community Schools is that we continue to move forward from things of the past in our community, things of the past in our world, and be able to work together for the best interest of our students.
My hopes and dreams for our schools is that we can stay the front runners as technology and education continue to grow. We know AI is coming. We know AI is going to be a big front runner in our educational process, so I'd love to see Oxford really take that in and cultivate it and be the district that other districts are looking at.
Oxford has big goals and big dreams. I think one thing that sets us apart is that we just shoot for the stars. So, for us to be supported and how we can work together is just to continue to ask our staff what the needs of the students are, and I think we do a good job of that, like, asking teachers, asking administrators, and working together, like, how can we better, how can we improve? And we always keep in mind why we're here, it's our students, and as long as we always center the students, I think we have great conversations about how to make a difference and continuing to dream big.
So, first and foremost, thank you to our teachers for participating, and they were just champs. They just came off the cuff and just said what was on their mind, and they were so well-spoken. I can see why they were identified as the Teacher of the Year for their schools, so we kind of, you know, cheated a little bit, but I'm just saying. So, they just, they just are so helpful in terms of giving us great insight in terms as far as, like, what hopes and dreams we have collectively for our school district and for our students, so I appreciate them taking the time to do that. The AI professional development, we came together last Tuesday, so it was a full-day professional development. In the morning, we had our secondary educators, and in the afternoon, we had our elementary educators, and we had all sorts of concepts that we explored. The tech team put together an amazing array of options for our teachers to attend. These are some that I attended. We got to know various platforms that are approved by Oxford Community Schools, and the great things, a great thing about having common platforms is, first of all, we're able to support them better, but second of all, they are actually, you know, Matt Santola talked about this, in terms of protecting our student data, right? So, just like we have data in Power School and teachers can interact with the data in Power School, school AI is what we adopted, and so teachers don't have to worry about accidentally putting a student name in there. They can put student papers up and help with analyzing the writing without worrying about, you know, FERPA or anything like that. So, that was, that was a huge learning piece for me. I just assumed all AI was not safe in terms of private information, so it's really good to know that our staff will not have to worry about that as long as they're using the approved platforms. There's also some really great information about ethical considerations for AI. It was really cool to see aha moments from our teachers when we were showing them how to use AI to reduce the administrative tasks. I'm sure you guys know that teaching requires a tremendous amount of administrative tasks, but our hope is always that they're going to be interacting one-on-one with students, right? Helping misunderstandings, helping to guide, so using AI and finding ways to reduce those administrative tasks, that they were just get, just the enthusiasm, like, "What? I can do this?" Yes. So, that was really fun. And then, I think one of the most critical aspects, Pam Beal, I attended her session, and I think it was Diffit, and it's a platform that can differentiate for our learners, so especially our students with IEPs who have very specific needs. It's able to take tasks, reading levels, all sorts of things, and level it to the student and the student's needs and where they're at. So, that was super cool. And as I mentioned, like, last fall, we had, I think, no AI going on in the district. Like, we didn't, it was blocked. We didn't have any AI. And now, to be, a year later, because of a committee that came together, they were very passionate about it. They went to a training, they went to a professional development to learn more about it, they established the policy, they did all of these things, they were really passionate about it. Now, we have internal capacity to teach our own people, which is amazing, because you're much more likely to go to the person next door, your classroom next door, than you are to travel somewhere to get professional development. So, it was just, it was a wonderful day, very enthusiastic, great learning, so I am incredibly proud of our technology team. They did a great job. I've got too many devices here. All right, and of course, we had our Welcome Back, lots of enthusiasm, so much energy in the room, so we had our celebratory breakfast. I've never seen a group of educators show up so early. They were ready and raring to go. They were ready for the breakfast, they were ready to see their colleagues. We had the Oxford High School jazz band playing, so that was really cool. We had photo booths that they could take pictures with their colleagues. That was really fun. Our opening session talked about the new strategic plan, and it also having everybody in the same room talking about the new Raptor Alert, the Student Safe, and just everyone hearing the message at the same time, all at once, troubleshooting some of those things, and then getting ready for follow-up at individual sites. Streamline things significantly. We also had a visit from U.S. Senator Slotkin. You can see her there with our drum majors and Mr. Gibbons, our band director. She was very energetic, delivered a speech on leadership, so that was much appreciated. And then, of course, our band led the way down to the whole staff photo that you see there on the left. And the cool, my favorite part, the band always gives me chills, I just love hearing our band, but they created a tunnel down the hallway for our staff to walk through, and that was just amazing, just, it was such a powerful Welcome Back and a great way to celebrate our return, so I appreciate everyone's involvement in that. And of course, we had our Welcome Back school events. We had, phew, we had a lot. We had curriculum nights, pop-in for popsicles, open houses, meet the teams. This was, on the left is Leonard, that was their pop-in for popsicles. The line was out the door and around the building. It was so cool to see our families show up excited, kids excited to come back to school. And of course, our very own Ann Atchison and her family, the reason why I chose that picture is our schools make it really special. They make those evenings really special and celebratory. Some of our younger students get really nervous about coming back, and so it's helpful to have opportunities, you know, take pictures and all sorts of things, just to kind of calm those nerves and help with the transition, so. We also handed out flyers about the vote on November 4th, the proposals, the two proposals, the sinking fund and operating millage. Families were very receptive. We handed out, oh, I can't even tell you how many we've handed out, probably thousands by now, that give families a better understanding of what they are, what they'll do for students. So, we've handed those out. Meet the teams, it was, it was, phew, it was a lot, but it was very well-received, so that was, that was good. All right, stadium field. So, that was, that's just a progression of the field over the few weeks. It's amazing how it has come together, and a little nerve-wracking, but I talked to Tony DeMar today. They are actually doing a walkthrough tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and if all things go well, we can actually have our teams on the field. So, that's really amazing. And our opening weekend is this weekend with football and soccer. I think there are other sports as well, but I know they have pretty big games coming up, opening games, so. And then, this, how cool is that? That is an aerial view. A colleague who flies a plane flew over and took these amazing pictures and also recommended that I be the one to jump out of the plane and deliver the game ball. That was met with a big no, not doing that, but we are having a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Friday to commemorate the field, so very exciting, very stressful, but very exciting. It really came through. I'd like to thank the Tim LaPlante, John Fitzgerald, Tony DeMar. They, from the beginning, have been on it and just making sure that we're meeting deadlines, keeping me informed, making sure I don't have a nervous breakdown, all those great things, so I really, really thank our team for this, and there's no way we would accomplish this without them. And finally, before I hand it off to my colleagues, there are, hello, oh, wait, no, one more, sorry. First day, I can't forget the first day of school. What happened? Again, let's see, the Wildcat, it's a mystery who that was. I'm going to share the mystery. That is our own Kristy Smith in the costume. Yeah. Did I ruin it? So, you know, she showed up, got the kids jazzed. Kids were so excited to be at school, and up in the top right-hand corner, those are our high school kiddos now that they have, are able to have their own backpacks. We've got Barbie, we got Moana, we got it all, so they were really, really excited about the backpacks. So, first day of school, really great. I also want to thank Gary Van Stavren, who was the interim, interim principal over at Leonard, and on the very first day of school, had a three-hour power outage and handled it like a champ, and his whole staff handled it beautifully, kept the kids calm, kept them focused, worked with the custodian to make sure everything was taken care of, so thank you, Gary, for handling that so well. And now, the three presentations you'll hear, these are aligned with our strategic plan. Our safety update will be Dr. Williman. Goal one, aligned action 1.1. Goal four, aligned action 4.2. The climate and culture survey, which is Dr. Van Stavren. Goal one, aligned actions 1.1 and 1.2. And facilities update, which is Mr. Fitzgerald. Goal four, aligned action 4.1 and 4.3. So, I will invite Dr. Williman to come up.
All right, so as we continue to share information, to give updates, I wanted to be able to direct everyone to the website to find the document that I will be using. So, if you just go to Oxford Schools, sorry for the one finger hunting and pecking, and go to menu and scroll down to departments and school safety and security, it's going to take you to this page, which will give you all of the information that we're going to talk about during the board meetings. But the specific document that I'm going to be referencing today can be found in this orange box where it says, "Information from the virtual community conversation." For those of you who are unable to attend that, you're more than welcome to watch the video there, but the specific document that I will be referencing is linked within that yellow box where it says, "Access the safety/security overview sheet." And so, that's kind of where we're going to ground ourselves for the next couple of updates, just so that as we go through, that there's order and organization to it. So, we're going to start with the physical safety measures, and the first one is the Evolve Weapons Detection System. As many of you with high school and middle school students know, we added to our Evolve system, and so they not only have the Express system that they walk through, we also have the Expedite system, which is a bag scanner. For those of you that have traveled through airports before, it's similar to that. Ms. Satterstad at the middle school liked to call it our TSA Pre-Check. But the kids put their bags on, it scans it and goes through. We've cut down a lot of the secondary searches that have been done. Typically, last year, there'd be approximately 100 students that would have to have their bags gone through, their purses, all of those things with the bag scanner. It is an X-ray machine like it is through TSA, so we're able to see things. When we were testing it out, we even saw a fork. Someone couldn't find their fork from their lunch, and there it was. But we've cut down a lot of those secondary searches. The students are cooking with it. We're seeing at the middle school, it's pretty evenly distributed for arrival for bus and drop-off, so it's been very clean. At the high school, we have pretty unbalanced right now. We have approximately 1,000 students going through Door 2, and we have about 450, 500 kids going through Door 17. So, I know Mr. Bigelow's been really good, meeting with me, speaking with Dr. Milligan as well, about how do we problem-solve that? So, one information that went out to parents already was a request for a freshman and sophomore parent drop-off to switch to the back of the school for Door 17, and we're going to continue to problem-solve. We've talked about bad weather, and it's just one of those, as we make changes, but when it's going, it's going. It's great. The first day of school was interesting because kids would put their bags on it and look at it, and then their bags, because we're taught at the airport, watch your bag go through, and this system is very quick, and so they'd get to the end and then they'd look at their bag again, but now they're, they're picking it up, and it's, it's a great, it's a great tool that we have to be able to bring the regular backpacks based on student feedback, but ensure we have that layer of security built in as well, so that we can give children that experience of going back to, as you saw, the Moana backpacks and Pikachu. Kids were really excited about their backpacks, and really, it was really easy for them to go through the process, so we're going to continue to work on that with any change, any new product. There's always things to work through, and so it's a, it's an awesome experience to be able to work with a team as great as the high school team, the administrative team, the security team, who's willing to sit and, like, problem-solve in the moment. And so, it, we'll keep working on it to get those numbers evened out, but it's been a great Welcome Back. If you want more information about Evolve, the link right here where it is underlined, it is a live link. It will take you to the Evolve webpage, so you can read more on your own. The next thing is we have our Fortis Armed Security. There's at least one armed person on every campus, and so being able to maintain that piece of security, I think, is key, as we know that a lot of our Fortis employees become more than just our security personnel. We have people who are regularly mentioned in graduation speeches as being their trusted adult. Support Staff of the Year have been some of our Fortis contracted security personnel, and just little things that they're tasked with, they will do, and so much of it, when you think about us as educators, we're used to building those types of relationships, and then just seeing our Fortis personnel wanting to become invested and part of our community and going to after-school events and just being able to be more than just the person that is armed on our campus and really embracing who they are and who we are and working together to ensure the safety of everyone. And then, the last one that I wanted to touch on was our school resource officers for today. And then the last one that I wanted to touch on was our school resource officers for today. So we have Detective Rofalski was in the doorway, but he's out there. He's housed at the high school. We also have Detective Justin Barnes, who's housed at the middle school. And they, I say they're the gold standard of SROs, so I'm making him come in to hear that while I say that, and I think it's true. I talked to a lot of people, whether it's in this county, in the state, nationally. And I will say, yeah, my most frequently called people on my phone are my husband, my sister, and then Detective Rofalski, because four to five times a week in the morning, we're just touching base, not because there's necessarily anything going on, but we're checking in with each other. Before the meeting tonight, because we hadn't had a chance to see each other today, we were checking in with each other on various things. And so knowing that we have that type of relationship is so helpful for our community and everything that happens, whether it's summertime or just the day-to-day. I'm not a law enforcement official. I never have claimed to be, do not have that background. So it is so helpful to have not only our Fortis personnel, our security specialists, but also our sheriff's department to be able to talk through different things like that. And so those were the three things I wanted to highlight today on this page. We'll continue to go through this page. And as a reminder, you can access that through the School Safety and Security Department, part of the website. And again, it's in the yellow box right here where it says, access the safety, security overview sheet. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Shane?
Yeah, I just have a question. The Fortis employees that are at every campus, what hours are they there?
They're there during the school days. So they're typically there before and after, but it's, their hours are while students are in session. And then we do typically, like when we got back from break, when teachers came back, because we just want everyone to get used to it and we've had some staff changes and everything across the district, they came back the Monday before kids came back, just to be able to get settled in.
Okay.
Any other questions? I apologize, I didn't know that you were only going to go through a few of these. So I did have a question, so feel free if you don't want to answer it tonight. But regarding the Raptor system that was introduced at the Welcome Back.
Yeah.
Could you share the timeline for, I know you had said you were going to each building and campus to familiarize staff. I know some staff were, it was a lot, right? So what is your timeline and plan for rolling that out and making sure that all staff is comfortable with that system?
Well, a lot of it's going to be dependent on what the administrators need and when they request it. The principals all went through an extensive training during Safety Day. Elementary and secondary, we spent over an hour working through that. They went through a simulated drill. And so the support is really going to be ongoing. We've had about 10 staff members across the district have some login issues. A lot of that being they switched campuses, they didn't log in with the right email address. And so those have been addressed as they've come to our attention. And there's been some requests for smaller groups, so it's just going to be a matter of working with the principals to get that going. But that is live and we are able to use it at any time. And that was a lot. And it was a lot of people, so just being able to get the information out. But we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from staff, just wanting to have that follow-up. And again, like the principals all went through the training with me as well, so they'll be able to provide support. And if we need more, I can come help, Trevor can come help and our Raptor rep can come down and help as she lives in LaPire.
Great. And you had mentioned that it was voluntary to download on your phone, but it would be on all district devices.
Yes, it has been pushed out on all district devices. Any person and any employee who does not receive a phone stipend, we cannot require them to download anything. We can just highly suggest and ask that they do.
Okay. Are you able to see how, with the percentage of staff that have downloaded it versus have not, or no?
I could possibly try to get you that answer. I don't know on the back end if we would be able to have that information. But knowing that everyone has it on any district device that they have and no one has reached out to me yet about other alternatives.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry to put that one on you. And of course, I appreciate all of our staff willing to learn that and have a comprehensive understanding and put that on their cell phones. So thanks again.
I just wanted to add one piece, and Allison, I appreciate you lifting this up. Our principals in the building are the safety leaders. Safety lives in our schools and that is the goal, that our principals have the confidence and the knowledge to be able to support the safety processes in their building. They are the ones in charge of their school. And so the fact that you're empowering them, you're supporting them, you're giving them the information and the knowledge, I think, is really critical. And as they get more confident and more practiced, that'll be like, you know, second-hand. They'll just be able to do it. So I appreciate you empowering our leaders.
Safety is everyone's responsibility.
Anything else? Thank you, Allison. All right, here's Dr. Van Stavren with the school quality survey information.
Good evening, everybody. It is good to be in front of you again, Gary Van Stavren. And tonight, we're going to look at the school quality survey. And this was a survey that we administered in the spring. So the purpose tonight is to share this with you, share the information, results. And so going to be a little bit vulnerable because you're going to see some areas for growth, but then there's also going to be a lot of celebrations, all right? And as we get started, you know, we're still talking about the strategic plan like continuously. It's permeating through everything that we do. So I wanted to start tonight with a message from our Board of Ed and our superintendent, because we're all in this together, all right? And I really feel that your message that's at the start of the strategic plan is very powerful. So just to tease out a couple of things, because I've been telling people about our strategic plan and it's a roadmap for the next future. And it says, it is more than a roadmap for academic success. It is a shared commitment to healing, unity, and meaningful progress. And together, we are building a future in which Oxford students are seen, supported, and prepared to thrive. I just wanted to start with that because we are in this together. So this school quality survey is a district average. So you're going to see three different stakeholders, staff results, student results, and then parent results. And we're taking the district average of all of those from all the different buildings and even staff that are from non-student buildings, okay? This past spring, it was conducted in April to May, and we had 1,600 students participate. So that's our secondary students, grades six through 11, 1,600 students. Parents, 471, and staff, 351. So what is it? Like what is the school quality survey? It covers six different areas, six different dimensions, on questions like about academic support, student support, school leadership, family involvement, safety and behavior, and communication. So first, we're going to start with looking at those three different stakeholder groups. And this first group is the parent guardian group. And we're going to take a look at highest and lowest indicators. So this is kind of that part about celebrations and also being a little bit vulnerable about what we can continue to work on. And so at the top here, we have our highest indicators. And so we're looking at last year and this year, so that we have some comparison. The N stands for the number of participants. And so when we look here at 2024, last year, percent strongly agree or agree. And then right here, 2025, and you can see each of those columns. And so these are the highest level indicators from our parents. And so you see different survey items here, like families are encouraged to attend school-sponsored activities such as back-to-school night. 93% last year, 91% this year. But you also see some others here as well. And then this last one, the school is safe. And I just want to tease that one out here because you can see a dramatic increase from our parents, their perception about how safe our schools are. When we look down here, these are areas for growth, some of our lowest indicators. So that's around discipline and then teachers giving timely feedback. So again, looking at last year, percent strongly disagree or disagree. And then this year. Now, what I want to notice, you to notice here, is we had 1,000 parents participate last year and 471 this year. It could be the time of the year, it could be the fact that it was in late April, May. And we do plan to give this survey earlier next year. Any questions? And next, we're going to take a look at staff. So again, highest, lowest.
Shane had a question, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just couldn't hit the button fast enough. Looking at the data that you have here for the bullying item, 23%, I'm certain that's not the end goal. What is the plan to significantly increase that moving forward?
It's a very good question and I am going to get to that in a couple minutes. So, good question. But you're exactly right, that's not okay and we need to do better. So looking at staff, all right? So this time, we're looking at staff, students are going to be next. Our highest level indicators here across the top. And look at every one of these. When you look at 2024 and 2025, you're going to see each one of these highest level indicators have all gone up or remain the same. And then our lowest indicator did go up and that's, that's not, again, that's not a good thing, but that is something that we are going to be addressing in our strategic plan. Also, look at the number of participants, 400 to 351, so pretty consistent there. But look at some of these. There is a teacher, counselor, or other staff member to whom a student can go to for help with a school problem. There is a teacher, counselor, staff member, they can, a student can go to help for a personal problem. The school is safe. Look at that, 96% of our staff believe that school is safe. When we look at this one right here, all staff members are aware of safety and security procedures. Again, a nice increase there as well regarding safety in our schools, from our staff perspective.
Gary, can you clarify for the lower item, how that score, so the lower being the better? So 20% is better than 29%?
Yes.
It's flipped from the top?
Yes.
Yeah, can you clarify that?
Yeah, so naturally here, okay, discipline is enforced fairly. 20% strongly disagree or disagree. So 29% strongly disagree. That is actually, we would like to see that go down, okay? Go down, not up. So obviously, these, we would like to see these go up from year to year. And then these, we'd like to see them go down. And our students, our third stakeholder group. So when we look at these survey items, 1,381 students participated last year, 1,600 students this year. And again, look at the increases in our highest indicators. 88 to 91, 84 to 88. And then let's look at these again. You're going to see another, this is very similar to what we just saw with staff. There is a teacher, counselor, other staff member that students can go to. So one of our big pushes is to have a trusted adult. And you're seeing that here between the data from our staff and from our students, 1,600 students. All staff members are aware of safety and security procedures. 88% strongly agree or agree. All students are aware of safety and security and I am well-informed about my progress. When we look at these, again, you want to see these go down. And in this case, from our students, these highest indicators, these actually have gone down compared to last year. So discipline is enforced fairly. That has gone down from 29% to 26%. That's an improvement, you want to see that. And then teachers successfully show students how lessons relate to life outside of school. So that's improved as well. I'm very sorry. That is my daughter FaceTiming me. So, so next, we want to pivot a little bit to go away from the indicators, highest, lowest indicators, to look at a couple of really key points, which are about the quality of education. So again, looking at our different stakeholder groups, the overall quality of education, but looking at it also longitudinally. So looking at it over four years. So you can see here, the question is, how would you rate the overall quality of education? So if it's staff at DA, they're referring to DA. If it's staff at the high school, they're referring to the high school. If it's parents with kids at different buildings, that's what they're referring to. And students, it would be the middle school or the high school. So what we have here across the top in blue is 2021. We did not give the survey in 2022. 2023, 24, 25, those are the four bars. At the bottom, you see the student, staff, and parents. And then the N, again, the N is the number of participants. So you're seeing that again over the last four years. So right away, your eyes are probably going to a couple of things that might stand out a little bit. So for example, my eyes right away go here to students and I see a very nice 9% bump here this past year compared to last year in terms of students' perception of the overall quality of school. And then my eyes go right here to parents, the 92%. And so I was talking to my colleagues about that and we had a good conversation about, in 2021, that's during the pandemic, and Oxford was one of only two schools in Oakland County that went back to school right away. So it was us and Brandon. And so parents, I think, were pretty happy. So when we look at this and we look at 83, 83, 81, it's important to note that that is four out of five parents believe that there is a very high quality education here in Oxford. And then very similarly, but a different question, I would recommend my child's school. So again, looking at four different years, this one is based on percent strongly agree or agree. And then down here across the bottom, you see how many participants there are. So again, for our parents, your eyes kind of go right here, but let's look at this, 77, 78, 78. And then it's also important to note, last year, we had 1,000 parents participate and this year, 471. So that could alter that data a little bit. Any questions so far?
Yes. Is there a reason why we didn't do 2022?
It was, you know, it was pandemic, it was raft of tragedy, and so we did not do the survey that year.
Okay, I just thought it would be a better showing of how it may have gone down quite a bit and now we're back up where we were before.
No, that's a good question.
So I got a quick question. So one of the things I'm looking at, and I just kind of keep bringing in my head here. So the good news is the survey for students, the number went up. What are your thoughts in regards to the students versus staff and parents going down? What do we think we can do differently to get a larger percentage of participation?
I mean, staff did go up this, from last year to this year.
I'm talking about the percentage of participants?
Participants.
Yeah, so the 400 to 350 and then the 1,000, et cetera, like the actual number of.
No, Mike, that's a great question and we've talked about that too. And I really think that it was the time of the year because it was April, May. I think that we had given some other surveys. I think there might have been a little bit of survey fatigue. And so we do plan to give this much earlier, probably February or March of this year. So, but that's a good point. Okay, so now getting into growth opportunities and then the next slide is going to be about celebrations, okay? So again, this is kind of that vulnerable part. So when we take a look at, you know, 2,400 people participated in this survey, that's a lot of data, that's a lot of perception data. And so when you tease out, what are the top things that we need to work on and grow, growth opportunities? This is what came out, which was communication, curriculum staffing. And you saw some of those with the highest and lowest indicators. The bully prevention and consistent discipline practices. So, you know, this question was asked earlier, so what are we going to do about this? So, you know, this question was asked earlier, so what are we going to do about this? This is in, this is all embedded in our strategic plan. And so specifically, if I just look at these last two down here, bullying and consistent discipline practices. So specifically regarding bullying behavior, we're going to be using our MTSS process to support that. Multi-tiered systems of support. And really looking at our data-informed practices, looking at our early warning system, looking at our students and ensuring that they have a sense of belong, they have a trusted adult, they are beaten, taken care of. So really looking at MTSS, our data-informed practices to promote student success, well-being, and safety. And then the consistent discipline practice, what are we going to do about that? And keep in mind, we are doing these things, but now there's really intentionality with a strategic plan. So in 1.3, the Align Action 1.3, we're going to increase the consistency of implementation of a DK-12 school-wide behavior response management program to ensure fair and equitable discipline practices across all schools. So again, some very intentionality to address these. Any questions? Yes?
Sorry, I just have one. When it comes to the number of staff that have responded?
Yes.
Is that teachers, or is that all staff? That's a bus drivers, that's everybody?
Yes, all staff.
Okay, so how many would we have in total?
There are 800 staff in the district.
So roughly less than half participated?
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah, we'd like to see more.
Okay.
Yes.
Gary, as far as, so the last point you just touched on, the increased consistency of implementation of the DK through 12 school-wide behavior response management program. I was hoping there's a good pause, but I'm going to end up repeating it completely. But as far as, obviously, the, as you mentioned, the strategic plan is the roadmap of, and, but as far as, does this take more resources? Or how are we putting this into practice? We say increased consistency.
I would say, I would say it's not going to take more resources. It's going to take, I would say, intentional resources, like intentionality. Planning it in meetings, looking at our early warning system, looking at PBIS practices and making sure that they're consistently implemented across all buildings. So it's really, you know, being intentional about it, but also, I would say accountability as well, and just making sure that it is consistent across all buildings.
And Gary, let me add, so these are the aligned actions, there are strategies that are underneath these that might give some additional clarity. So the spreadsheet that Gary put together has all of those strategies, so that might be helpful.
And that is on our website.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. And celebrations. So I kind of ended here on purpose. This is incredible. And so there's been, you know, we've heard a little bit tonight about how amazing the district is, and we are doing a great job. And so I wanted to highlight top five key strengths. And we're going to be leveraging this as we go through our strategic process in the next five years. These are strengths, leverage the next five years. So high learning standards, positive relationships and culture, academic support services, school safety and security, and in bold here, dedicated and caring staff, and I'm going to read this, "Students, parents, and staff consistently praise the commitment, helpfulness, and approachability of our teachers and school personnel." And I find that to be really, really impressive. And so again, we are together in this, and so is our staff. So each school is going to be sharing their own school quality data, and that first presentation is going to be Clear Lake Elementary, and that's going to be next month. They're going to be sharing their celebrations, and then also their roadmap as well to work, what they're going to work on, okay? So Clear Lake Elementary will be first next month. And thank you. Any questions?
Sorry, just real quick, Gary, can you add where this data can be found?
Yes, this data is also on our website, okay? So you will be able to locate this website, sorry, this data on the website now. I believe if you go to District, is that correct? Okay, so go to District, and then is it Documents?
It is Documents.
It's on the website. We've, yes, it's there today. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one more, sorry. When it comes to the staff involvement and participation in this, I look at our teachers as our subject matter experts, our experts I lean on when it comes to what's going on in the schools and with our kids. How are we going to, I know you said the parents, you felt like it might have been fatigue from too many surveys. What's the plan to get more participation from our staff moving forward?
I think that we, I think it's going to be a consistent message that this is important. I think that, you know, if we all can do that as leaders, and leaders in our buildings, and really emphasize the importance of it, and that we're using this data, it's part of our strategic plan, it's helping guide us, I do believe we'll have more, for sure. Yeah, thank you.
I also want to add that the end of the year for teachers is very challenging. Kids are tired, teachers are tired, we're all tired. So giving a survey at the beginning of May, not awesome. So again, I think doing it earlier, February, when things are still a little calm, I think will help that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
All right, thank you, Gary. And John Fitzgerald, he'll be giving us the facility review update and 2017 bond sinking fund update.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to do a bit of an update when it comes to a couple of things. It's working. It's not working. Thank you. Just probably turn it on, that helps it work better. So just as a, some facility-related updates in terms of where we're at in terms of the facility condition assessment. The roofing analysis work is completed and documentation in place, site infrastructure work, meaning anything outside, parking lots, infrastructure, oversetted playgrounds, that's been completed, and we have that in our material hands. And that's in the process of being loaded into the new system. The building-specific analysis is ongoing. We're combining some existing state-based data information along with what, we'll end up doing a independent walkthrough. So we are planning on doing an update on the, I'm going to say it's the September 23rd meeting, whereby then, all of this should be coming together in a more concise, reportable format. But to that point, in terms of the sinking fund, just an update in terms of this flyer, if you recall from a while back, this actually presentation was, this is from the presentation that was given to the board by the superintendent back in 2017. The purpose of the flyer is to remind that the district was looking for 30 million, 30.4 million down at the bottom, in improvements for the district. The bond strategy, sinking fund strategy then was to raise the money, what they could to keep, the target was keeping their debt levy stable, and they can only generate roughly, at the outset, it was 25, by the time they came right down to the time to do this campaign. And this piece is from the campaign. There was a roughly 28 million, and I'll give you some specific numbers here in a minute in terms of what was funded through bond and what was funded through the sinking fund. So this, this is a front page flyer that was actually used in the 27 campaign, 2017 campaign, where you see all of the orange emblems, that's elementary world, yellow is middle school, the blue, background blue is high school. So they were using this as a handout for quick synopsis of the work that they were going to address with the bond sinking fund program. So for example, ACs and all the, air conditioning was installed at all of the elementary school during the projects to be done through this first series of issuance from this bond program, site improvement work, elementary, where elementary's got improvement work out of all three series, and you can see where the yellow picks up in the second and third series, and high schools in the third series. The check marks indicate that all that work was done. We worked with Clark Construction, who was the construction operator here during those programs. They, you know, I'd like to make a public thank you to them, they did a great job in helping dig through some of the old bond, bond project records. We use that to verify that everything that's said on these flyers that they were going to do was completed. They've got some underlying work papers that they use, so that we cross-reference what we could find. So we were pretty comfortable that what the district said in 2017 was going to be done, got done. The back page of this flyer had all this information on it, a little bit about the bond, a little bit about the sinking fund, but the lower right-hand corner is what I want to bring to everyone's attention. So right when they were coming up to the election, and this kind of information flyer was being distributed and communicated to the public, this is the bottom corner was the information piece, so why are we asking for both, meaning the sinking fund and the bond? There's a $2.6 million gap between project costs and the bond proceeds. So the calculation, the expectation for bond proceeds to keep the debt levy stable was $28,280,000, leaving roughly a $2.6 million gap to complete the 30, a little over $30 million worth of projects. So the 2017 sinking fund was used to fill that gap, and the balance is down the last line there, the balance would be used to address instructional technology and building security. That's what was promised in terms of the campaign. We verified the work was done. Fast forward to our recent digging into the files to confirm what did go on. So the 2017 sinking fund supplemented a portion of the projects, 2.268 million over the life of the projects came from sinking fund. And then school security tech and devices funded at 2.24 million over the life of the sinking fund came from the balance and sinking fund, as they had said in that flyer. Now, the numbers are a little higher, the total amount generated, the flyer estimated about a $4 million generation, it generated 4.493 million. So from a confirmation of what was said and relative to the projects that were completed, now this is a snapshot as to where we're moving in the forward day, moving forward. Since we're still working on the actual assessment piece in terms of identifying specific projects, conditions in specific buildings, we know, just based on our own observational piece and working with the buildings over the last year or so, the first year of the sinking funds roughly estimated $1.6 million revenue generation. These are the projects we'd be looking at in the district. So district-wide, we'd be looking at visual indicator locks, that's the flip lock, that's the quick flip, says they're, you know, closed, real quick to do, real easy. Filter first water compliance, that is, that is the state of Michigan's implementation of a federal government's water compliance legislation that went through a number of years ago. And filter first is what Michigan, the state of Michigan, when they embedded it through their legislation, called the program. So that's all those bottled water fillers you'll see in the different buildings. We have till June of 2026 to be fully compliant. Our high school, the district's roughly 90% compliant now. Outside of the high school, on average, every other building needs at least one more bottle filler. There's a formula for, like that bottle filler back there in the back wall, you've got to have one of those for every 100 students built into the formula. So most of the buildings are just about there, a couple of the buildings will need one more bottle filler. The high school, which got, has almost 40 different water fountain systems, some bottle filler, some old bubbler style. A lot of those are installed in this earlier bond program, the 2018 bond program, which are not compliant. The ones that went in then did not have filters, and the way they're built and they're inserted in the walls, you can't, you can't retrofit a filter that's going to be compliant with what the state regs want in. So over the course of this year, and ideally over the course of the next month, the high school will be brought up to code. Definitely by the end of the school year, all the buildings, all the district buildings will be code and compliant. The difference is, if you'll see, a lot of the bottle fillers over the high school, you won't see a counter, and you won't see filter lights on it, like that one back there, you can see a bottle counter and the lights. That's what they all have to be. So those are on the way in, that will be addressed through this process. One way or another, we're going to be in compliance relative to the sinking fund, whether it's funded general fund or sinking fund, one way or another, in this regard, the district will be in compliance. So at the high school, if you look through all the buildings, there's a lot of similar themes, a lot of roofwork, boilers, air handlers, so the driving force of priority is health and safety. And at 1.6 million, we could, literally, one, one building would burn that whole amount up replacing the entire roof. So the roof analysis I just admitted, just mentioned had come in, there's the different buildings, sections of the roofing, roofing in the different buildings are all in different conditions. Ironically, the middle school, which when I kind of thought, I thought would be in a little tougher shape, it got graded as a C, so of course, the roofing company, knowing they're working with the school district, they have to use, they had to go with a grading model as to how good and how bad. So an A, if you have an A on the right-hand side where it says grade, this is actually Daniel Exford, by way of example. They had, of course, using an A through F grading system. So we would be targeting with the sinking funding, funding any sections in the buildings that have an F grade, so like, for example, at Daniel Exford, section one, section six and section eight are F graded, meaning they're in the worst shape, and they need to be replaced in first, work time first. So that's the coding on the top. So the middle school, ironically, has Cs across the board, and it's got a lot of rooftop. So that's good, that doesn't mean it's not leaking, so the actual leaking pieces, those will be separately driven projects to get those taken care of. But the actual mass of the roof and the underlying element there are in fairly good shape. So this kind of, this is the kind of data information, and for example, the middle school version of this itself is a 70-page report in terms of breaking down everything you could possibly think of that needs to be looked at for roof structure. So that's all being accumulated too, and of course, we're using a Google Doc system, which I'm actually getting, getting more better at with the Google Doc system. I'm not a real Google guy, so it's, you know, I'm changing, I'm learning there. So that is what I have with, for tonight, and as we move forward on the planning, a planning approach, knowing that what a sinking fund would generate annually, knowing what the scale of the different health and safety-related projects would be addressed first, building out a five-year rolling budget that'll end up on the website, is going to be pretty straightforward once the final grading of all the different pieces come into place. And once that's out, and I said, and actually on the 20th, I believe it's the 23rd of September, we're going to be doing an updated meeting on that piece too, in terms of where we're at with all of that work. Any questions?
Dan?
I just want to clarify that you so kindly clarified for us at the finance committee meeting, that the quality of the water is not at issue, the reason...
I'm so glad you brought that up.
Yes, the reason for the replacement is to be compliant.
Correct. The, one of the other things, I'm glad you really brought that up, because it just sparked another thought in my mind. Through the whole filter first compliance program, they're very prescriptive, literally down to, we must have signs on everywhere there's a water source. So like back there, you'd have a sign that basically says drinking water, and if there was, you can go anywhere in one of these, especially the elementary buildings, you'll find a sink somewhere that you wash your hands, and there'll be a sign now placed over there that says hand washing only. We want to really emphasize that the water in the district is good water, always has been. This is, these signs are really being driven through the compliance piece in terms of how they're worded, the message they got to relay, and why they're all there. We do not want anyone thinking, I can see some of the younger kids coming home saying, hey, we've got these signs on our water sources now that we can't drink them anymore. It's simply compliant, the water in our district is actually very good. And then once we get the, the bottle fillers that are, need to be added up at the, all the buildings, they'll be completely compliant across the district. Really glad you brought that up, I made a note to bring that up and totally forgot.
I had a quick question with the, you said whether or not the, that the sinking fund passes, that we'll be in compliance with the water, but what about the locks on the doors? Is that a only if, or is that a no matter what?
No, that was, that probably falls into no matter what, from a safety, that level of health, that level of safety, being water and safety indoors, one way or another, we'll find funding on those kinds of projects.
Thank you.
Again, I think I've said before, ideal for a school district, the sinking fund is the approach to do the facility upkeep and things like that, but no matter what happens, we'll find the funding to do those projects.
But for clarification, when you say we'll find the money, it'll come out of our general fund?
Correct.
And the general fund is used for?
School operations, so it's going to, it'll be... So it's going to, it'll be continue the process we've been in where we're stretching, stretching short resources, and it's a tug-of-war between, you know, what's going to go in the classroom and what has to do, in this case, it'd be water or whatever. So, and that's ideal for a sinking fund to separate those out and let the curriculum and classroom operating money go in there, and then this goes into facility maintenance. Help keep.
Thank you both for that. Also, with the, you had sent over the middle school roof, and to be honest, I wasn't expecting a C to be our best one. And so, just curious, do we have those reports from 2017? Did all of the roofs in the last seven years really decline that rapidly? What can we expect for seven years from now if the sinking fund passes and we do this repair work? The kind of situation will be in then?
The kind of work that we'd be doing with these kinds of repairs should be adding 10-plus years of life to the roofs.
Okay.
The documents they use to make decisions on the bonds, we did not, we did not dig out. I mean, we could probably dig down with Clark Construction and they might pull something out, but that's a well too, that who knows, they may end up being our next construction group. So they may be willing and they may want to bill for it, so.
Okay.
So the point being though, once, once we get the plan in place, the life expectancy of all the roofs will be extended. And the curious thing to me about the middle school was that the whole roof was rated C. We've got some roofs that have plenty of A, that are in good shape, with much more variability than just the middle school. I'm going to guess the middle school is one of the buildings that got a lot of roofwork in the 2018 bond program.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you very much, John.
Yep.
Item number six, our committee updates. It looks like we had a finance and a governance that met. Mike, would you like to give us a recap on finance first?
Sure.
Thanks.
So, well, we started, we'll flip the agenda, but we started with the budget calendar discussion and just how the state has not settled on a budget yet, and so how we're managing that from, well, how, not we're, how John and Courtney are managing that from a planning standpoint and trying to prepare for whatever comes out of that, the state budget, right? So, a couple different, I guess, contingencies, if, depending on what the state budget, they're trying to work in parallel to be ready or prepared. Just, I mean, to kind of reiterate on that, just, I mean, if the budget isn't settled, it will put an additional crunch on us financially. So we're trying to figure out that, as well as how to plan for what we think may be budgeted, right? There's two, two aspects of it. And that may also push back reporting dates that are due in November, December, depending on when we get everything. They'll be working on aligning with the state budget, and they might have to push back some of the reporting dates. We did talk about.
I know, sorry to interrupt, I just have a question. I know other districts are absolutely talking about this as well, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we're in a bit better of a position that we have a healthy fund balance because other districts are faced with what if we have to pay bills in October that we don't have funding for?
Yeah, I think, sounds like October will definitely be fine. I mean, I mean, I don't want to say nuclear option, but worst case, like if it really gets delayed, we were having that discussion on, on, we'll get, I think October we'll be able to cover. I don't know if you want to touch anything more on that, John? It's up to you. Well, how we're managing the delay on the state budget passing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the things we talked about is putting in place the line of credit. So it'll cost, there's a fee tied to that, but if we, if, God forbid, the state legislature, which wouldn't surprise me, slides in too late into fall by the time they decide what they're doing. So to your point, what other districts are doing, fund balance, we've got a healthy fund balance that'll help us, but we're also looking at putting a line of credit in place. We hope not to use it, so the cost of it will simply be the cost of the setup fee. But if we need to get the additional cash flow to bridge the gap to when the state does get something in place, it would be good to have that as a backup. So we're looking at that now. There's some, there's the process to that. I believe there'll be a resolution involved for the board approval to establish that kind of a credit instrument for the district. So I've got, been going back and forth with legal counsel on a couple of things, and probably we'll be bringing something forward in the not-too-distant future. Hopefully, it's a moot point and they actually get it fixed. But the other thing that's hanging out there too is relating to the food service program. Right now, the state lunches are free under the food service program. That funding technically runs out at the end of September with the school, with the state school year, the state's fiscal year. In terms of our planning and for the nuclear options, so to speak, if things get really bad, we would be looking at moving back to a fee-based program sometime in January. So again, waiting for the state to get its act together. The reason the food, the food service piece is probably two steps higher on the concern list, is the, the House has already removed it from its budget proposals. And usually when that happens, there's some kind of behind-the-scenes chip being created, and that might be the one they're playing with. So, we're just trying to get ahead in terms of planning. We hope not to go that route, but we'll have something ready to go if it does.
Okay, we did talk about the, like, in general transparency discussion, we reviewed a few different high-level, I mean, different reporting options as far as the, specific to the credit card accounts and how we were reporting those. I don't, I didn't check, has that been updated on the website yet, or? No? Okay. And so we, we did look at two different options. One, which will be on the, on the website, is per credit card, kind of showing the cardholder in total. And then the other option was a, I don't really want to say itemized, because it wasn't broken down to that resolution. It was, but it was per charge, but you'd see whatever the vendor that made the charge would just be on there. So, if it was Amazon, it'd be an Amazon charge, but it would be that single charge to that, that credit card, but not itemized, not broken out. Or things like some hotels, there'd be, wherever their financial controls were handled, was what the charge was showing up at, even if we stayed in Traverse City or somewhere, it was, it was showing up in Texas, right? Things like that. And so, as a, as a committee, we discussed that, and I don't, it really didn't give us any more detail than, useful detail, I guess, it was more minutia. And so it was, so again, we went with the high-level, high-level option, and that will be on the website soon. I don't know when. Let me see real quick if I touched on that. And then, there'll be an FAQ as well going along with that on the website. Insurance discussions, we did talk about the RFP and getting it out to two to three pools and two to three private commercial. RFM is the sub we're consulting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that the correct acronym?
Risk Program, the RPA.
RP? RPA, I apologize. And I don't have really a timeline for response to that, but we had talked about what that might look like if we get responses mid-contract, or if, if, if we would have to wait for the end of this year to bring on the, bring on the potential new insurance company. So that's still up in here.
So, for clarification, we renewed with SETSEG this month for a year, but we don't know yet if we'll be able to be reimbursed for unused months if we switch to another insurance? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a response. We talked about some of our bid cycle discussions, like especially the ones that are reoccurring, buses, computers being two of the top ones. And kind of, I know relatively recently, we've had them come to the board asking for immediate approval on those items. And one of the things is, a lot of those are known, like they will come up when they did. Like, we usually get a bus or two, and we, we make a big purchase on computers, and as we discussed in those meetings, sometimes deals come up and they, they need to be acted on to save money. The buses were one of the big ones, was the price we got on that. As I mentioned in the meeting, actually, I was surprised that we got the buses for as cheap as we got. And so, especially for those reoccurring, just having those on account, like, maybe not saying in June, right? But June, July, August timeframe, these will come up, right? And so that the board can be prepared for those, and it doesn't seem to be coming out of left field. Having, having some of that discussion. And there was how, how we can manage, especially for some of those bids, having them just be an introduction to the board, like a first hearing and voting on that same meeting. As well as we talked about the process to get to that point before they're coming to the board, right? It's been, it's gone through a lot of checks and balances within the schools, and so that's the other half, side of it. A lot of the times, when we do the first hearing the way we're structured, then we have to wait for two to plus weeks to vote on it. We're reaching out to those vendors saying, I promise, right, that, that we're going to, we're going to make this purchase. And there's some, and it's really just kind of that waiting, because of the due diligence for certain of those, those costs, they're requiring, I mean, you know, we're, I guess, that's, that's trying to expedite that process and make the best of, of making those purchases when we, when time and matter. We talked on the filter first, I think John really kind of hit all that. But, yeah, just that it was statewide requirement, we're getting them all in there, and it has to be, as he said, it's got to be a monitored filter. Like, it can't just be, like, you plug, you put a filter in, like he was saying, the, some of the bottle fillers cannot be retrofitted. It's because it has to be like a monitored status filter. It can't just be a filter you plug in underneath it somewhere or up the upline. So that's the, that's the issue with having to replace the bottle fillers that don't have that readout. Talked, touched, briefly touched on central office RFP. There's been quite a few walkthroughs in interest, but we'll see. We should, we should hear relatively soon. I don't know if we have any other, any new updates this week. I know it was only a couple days ago.
Yep.
Let me see. That's, that's pretty much it. That's it, I think.
Quite a busy policy.
Anne?
Finance.
Anything? Oh.
I guess, maybe it's a more of a commoner question for John. The question of early termination or withdrawal from a contract that we may have with SETSEG, that language wouldn't be in our contract? Like, it wouldn't be something we'd be able to find? Okay.
Not that I have. So, I went to my contact there and they're running up their flagboat. It doesn't happen a lot, I'm the concerned, I mean, our concern is if they're, because it's mid-year and everybody makes plans on what they got, you know, how that works.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mike? All right. Thank you, Mike. And governance committee, James is not here. Who is going to provide it? Anne? Thank you.
I will, real fast. My fellow board member brought up that it does look like, when?
Today.
Today. So Michigan House did pass a state budget, $78.5 billion state budget. So that's still obviously got to go through, but that was an update.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah. Okay, governance, we met back on August 15. I'll just breeze through what we had, and Tanya, please jump in where I missed things. We went over the policy 2201 follow-up, which is the accreditation certification by the state superintendent. No longer, it's no longer a thing. So, addressing that, that is merely part of the policy, that is not really applicable. Jump in if there's anything else you want to fill in on that.
Yeah, forwarded a legal opinion.
Yes.
Pertaining to accreditation. So, districts have other means by which they ensure that the curriculum meets standards, and we do that through the state, through MDE now. But I think I forwarded that to all the board members.
So is that something policy is looking at?
That's what I was going to ask, is that something you would like policy to look at?
It doesn't need to. I went with Jennifer Starland with Troon, and the way that it's written, it says accreditation or a state program to review it, so that's what we do.
Okay.
Because there are some districts that are still choosing to have a third party go through their curriculum, and that's their choice. We don't do that because it costs a lot of money and very little benefit.
Sure. Thank you. We also had a wonderful FOIA platform presentation from Justin. It was very informative, really awesome program that he has there to help streamline that process, both for the users submitting the FOIAs, as well for the back-end, back-of-house operation, and also easy to view. It's publicly accessible, so I think that's great. And is that live already? Yes?
It is.
It is live? Okay, thanks.
And the two really cool things about that is, it has a redaction tool in it, so whatever document we upload, you can select a certain phrase or a name and say redact all of it. It can go through the whole document and do that. We were doing that by hand, which is why some of those FOIAs cost a lot of money. So this will reduce the cost for FOIAs when we do have to do redactions. The other thing which is really great is that, once a FOIA is submitted and a document is provided on the platform, on our website, you can, anyone who requested a FOIA, and we give the document, that document, for the most part, unless it has sensitive information, is available to anyone, once it's on that website. So you don't, you can look through all of the documents that have already been requested and see what they are, so you don't have to submit a separate request. So again, a huge time saver, streamlining the process, making more, information more accessible, and reducing the cost for FOIAs.
That sounds fantastic. Is that retroactive or just starting from when the program went live? Just starting from now? Okay. Thanks.
We revisited the board communication. We revisited the board communication piece, and the survey results as well, so I think that is linked in the board book. So everyone has access to that document.
And we went through each of the themes, and I think that this will be really handy for our retreat conversation, because many of these concepts, we thought, would be great to embed in our retreat work. In addition to radical candor, which you now all have, and as well as our community forums, so we can touch on that a little bit more. Is that okay, Anne? If we do that?
Yeah. And then, the last piece that we had was the agenda development. That was, that was it. Those were the, did I miss anything, Sarah Beth?
I don't think so.
Okay. No? Yes?
I think, I think that's good.
I know, I, it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Anne or Governance Committee? All right. Thank you for your work on that committee. And we will move into Item B, our retreat planning. Tanya, would you like to give a little backstory, or would you like me to?
Yeah, so the first two retreats that we had in January, and I think March or April, John Silvery facilitated. Unfortunately, he has torn his Achilles heel, I know. And so he may or may not be available in October. We were looking at three different dates. October 18th was the one he thought he might be able to do, however, he wasn't sure. And so we just want to talk about possibly choosing a different person. Amanda had a recommendation of somebody that we can reach out to, and see if they're available to help facilitate the conversation around some of the topics that we identify as important.
Yeah, so when Tanya and I discussed, we came up with three dates that we thought would work well, and if everybody would want to grab their calendar. We had September 20th, October 4th, and October 18th was our kind of last choice. It being so late, we would like to get the retreat done earlier, so with that being said, that John is out. If we do have the opportunity, we, I know we all love John and enjoy having him facilitate, but there was another facilitator that came highly recommended from both Romeo and Troy board members. His name is David Hollings. And if we could reach out to him, and maybe see if either of the two earlier dates would work, I just want to get everyone's opinion.
September 20th.
So September 20th would be the first option, and then October 4th, and October 18th. And even with the 18th, John wasn't sure he could really commit. He even said that might be an overly ambitious target for him with that injury. So what are your thoughts on potentially doing the retreat, having a different facilitator, seeing how we feel about going back to John after that?
I like the option of having a new, a different facilitator. I mean, we know, we know John, and I would like to see what's out there. I think it'd be good.
Unfortunately, I can tell you, October 4th, I will be out of town for work. So October 4th is out for me.
Do the other two dates work for you?
They look like they do. The October 18th, and you said September 20th?
Yes.
The 20th looks fine to me.
Okay, so right now, we have the 4th out. Any other hard no's on any of these three dates?
18th would be tough for me. But I am definitely, I'm, actually, the 20th would work well. I mean, it's, I don't have, like, anything right now.
Yeah, granted, September 20th works well, and I do definitely say we need to look at it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Right? Because if we push it out, if we want to have another one, or if there's any potential follow-up, we're just pushing it out even farther into November, December, when you get into holidays, which is already going to be tough. And to Mike and Shane's point, if the other two days don't work for them, I don't know the rest of the board, but I'm all for the 20th, and I'm good with it. And I'm good with, you know, testing the waters, right? Which is, is the committee that Shane and I run, and it is exactly that, right? So testing the waters, see what's out there, and I think it's positive.
Great. Ladies, any preference? 20th works? 20th works? Wow. That could not have gone any better.
That was easy.
Okay. Well, then, that's what we will do. Well, everyone will go ahead and schedule for the 20th, and we'll reach out to this new gentleman, and check his availability, and hopefully, all the stars will align, and we'll be having a retreat that Saturday morning.
Will you send out a calendar invite, just to hold that date?
I won't, but Justin will.
Justin, can you send it out? Thank you.
It always falls on you, Justin. Thank you.
Okay. That was easy peasy. Any other questions or comments about that? Okay, let's keep rolling. Last time, we brought you a list of policies for first reading. Unless there were any additional questions, would somebody like to make that motion? Shane, thank you.
Move to approve Policies 2504.01, 3315, 3115F-1, 3115A, 3118, 3201, 3212, 3301, 3407, 4101, 4103, 4105B, 4105B-F, 4106, 4403, 4407, 4408.01, 4409 as presented.
Support. Mike Aldred, thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the Title IX, I just want clarification that we don't allow boys and the girls and girls and the boys.
I don't understand your question.
The way it raised, it, I might not have read it all the way down, but it was saying about not discriminating against gender, identity, or expression. So I just wanted to clarify that we're not discriminating against employees as well, is what this is for, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I can invite Ryan Reed to the mic, if that would be helpful.
Okay.
Would you like, Ryan, do you mind coming to the mic and clarifying the Title IX?
Before you start, I just have a quick question. If we still have that recording, do you know if we have access to that? Because we had a very extensive presentation in policy. So just preemptively, before you go ahead and do that, I think it might be very, also helpful that you see that presentation?
No, I did not.
So that I'm saying it might be not on policy.
If I can have access to that.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to meet with Justin, he could, he could show.
Then show me.
That might be very helpful.
Then I'm good.
Well, can you, can you repeat your question, so that Ryan can?
Because we list gender identity and expression as a non-discriminatory, if a adult or a student decides they're a girl, but they're actually a boy, do we let them go in the girls' bathroom? Kind of thing.
So we, it's an interesting time, Sarah Beth, I think this is a question. Watching the video, I think, was very helpful, to have the Troon attorneys clarify the reason for clarifying the policy. There's different things going on at the federal level and the state level. However, in the state of Michigan, the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act has gender identity and expression as protected classes, so we cannot discriminate on gender identity or expression. So folks can use the facility that they identify with.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
No.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Appreciate that. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Asha Karius, thank you. All right, Item D, we have our field trip first readings. The Mackinac present, there won't be a presentation for Mackinac, that's in board book for everybody, but we do have a presentation for the Disney trip, Ms. Debbie Brown.
How are you? Everyone's doing great?
We do have your presentation, if it doesn't come up, we do have your presentation in board booking in hand.
Okay, perfect. I'll just come a lot closer if it doesn't come up.
There you go. If you need a copy, I can give you a copy as well.
Okay, thank you. I brought my computer, too. Okay. There it is. No, no worries. Thanks so much. Okay, if you're like me, and when you saw this come across your email, and you said "a communications trip to Disney," hmm. Let me tell you that I was in the same boat in May, when I received an email, I thought that Arctic Fox was trying to scam me, until I realized it was my personal email. And I was like, "Wait a minute, is this real? Could this really be happening?" I get, I get trip proposals for improv all the time, but never communications. So, once I looked into it, I was very excited. And my purpose of this presentation is just telling you the opportunity that Oxford has been given, to tell you how this aligns with our strategic plan, Goal Number Two, to share the itinerary with you, to share the cost, and all of the safety procedures that we will use on the trip. First of all, what I want to say is, this trip is to take a class at Magic Kingdom that is called Teamwork the Disney Way. Students are going to learn from Disney professionals, and actually take a course that Disney employees take within their first week on the job. It's exciting, they do have educational standards that match the national standards, but I also like the ones that pointed out that cast members have to work together every day towards a common goal. Why? Because they're making magic for everyone. They also have learning objectives, and a few that I want to point out are things that I really relate to, is to make sure that your team is highly effective, to make sure that you have shared responsibility, to make sure that you have collaboration skills. Also, looking at the continued objectives, I do like the ones that say, "Discover how diversity through," sorry, diversity of thought strengthens your team." That one really, I just relate so well to that one. And learning the value of communication, that's great for our kids. In park activities, this is what really got me excited, is that not only do we go and take the class, but then Disney provides us with challenges the entire time we are there. So if we are in Magic Kingdom, they're giving them teamwork challenges, so that they can use the information that they just learned in their three-hour class around the park. And they'll do that for every park that we visit. I think that makes this trip a little bit more special, and a little bit more fun for the kids to come together and have these challenges together. They are also willing to look at my curriculum, for my communication improv and my public speaking one and two, and create challenges specifically to my curriculum, for the students when we're there, and when we come home. How does this relate to my class? And how does this relate to our Goal Number Two, knowledgeable critical thinkers and communicators? In my class, number one, hands down, interpersonal communication is so important. How we communicate with ourselves, how we treat ourselves every day, and what we do with that in our future, matters. I also wouldn't have looked at this field trip if I didn't think it was something that these kids could learn from and use in their future. Soft skills, this is something, over and over again, our students struggle with, just basic eye contact. Learning that they have a voice, and that that voice truly matters. Their body language, ethics, valuing others, that's a good one, always. Forms of communication, they'll go over all four. They'll also go over the types of communications with our students, that I also mirror these in class with them. One thing that I really appreciate about it is the strengths and weakness portion, knowing when to lead, knowing when to be a part of the team. I tell my students in the beginning, "The only person you're competing with is you. You may not be able to communicate like another person in that class, but you can be you, and you can use the strategies that I'm teaching you to make yourself better. Find what you're comfortable with, and use it." And of course, add imagination. It's one of my favorite things. In my class, we call it creativity, but I kind of like the Disney way of the imagination, so we'll go with that for the presentation. Our itinerary includes Day One, leaving after exams. What better way to celebrate the end of a semester than to go get on a plane? So parents would take the students down to the airport for us after exams. Myself and two other chaperones would meet them there. After being on several DECA trips over the last few years, we have mastered the airport with students. We send one staff member through security, the other one waits with all the students, and then another staff member will go halfway, and then the last one to bring up the rest of the students at the end, so that we safely travel through the airport entirely together. When we arrive in Orlando, we'll be transported by a Mir's bus, and we will go at All-Star Music Resorts. We'll have a strict 10 o'clock curfew, I'll talk about that in a few moments. Day Two is Magic Kingdom, we have a bright and early 7:00 AM sharp start, that is when we arrive at our, well, we leave to arrive at our teamwork class. Two meals provided that day. Student challenges all day throughout that park as well. And when we get back after the fireworks, of course, I know that would be important, not to miss, is our 11 o'clock curfew, so a little bit later, because Magic Kingdom is open for like 17 hours. Not that we're going to be there the whole 17 hours, but if we wanted to, we could be. So 11 o'clock curfew. Day Three, Hollywood Studios, board the bus, teamwork activities all day, two meals included. Again, come back a little bit earlier, 10 o'clock curfew in the hotel. Day Four is Epcot, same as the other two days. And Day Five, we are looking at adding Epic Universe, which, if you don't know, is a new park at Universal that just opened in May. Students would be very excited about that opportunity, since it would be brand-new for most of them. So we'd go there, and we would do what we consider Mrs. Brown's Epic Communication Challenge, and that day meals would be on their own, because it's not a Disney park, but that's okay, we won't tell Disney. It's okay. Day Six, we will have a reflection breakfast, where they will also create a video blog, talking about what did they learn on the trip, how does it connect to our class at home, and how will that help them prepare for their future. Then we'll head back to Disney Springs to have a little lunch, and then come home. Details, January 16th through the 21st of 2026, two school days will be missed, that is all, over that weekend. The cost will be between 2,000 and 2,200, because that depends right now on when we book, and what that looks like, with the hotel and the airfare probably being the most. So airfare, bus transportation, two meals per day, class and activities at three Disney parks, one day at Epic Universe. Booking with Disney, because that ensures us to get the best cost, because they are the ones from Imagination Campus that reached out to me. They will have us work with their travel company to make sure that we're getting the discount on the hotel, the discount on the tickets, and providing the best we can for our students. Fifteen students, the teamwork classes is a small class. They encourage you to have anywhere from 15 to 20, because in a team, they want to teach them how that close-knit community works. So that's what we're going to shoot for, three chaperones, all of them being staff members. And a nice benefit of this for their future is, students can list this class as training on a resume or college applications, because it is a professional-level class. It would also look good, because I will be having them meet with some people from the intern and college program as well, while we are there. Student safety, most important thing to us. One to five, adult-to-student ratio. Night check, students must make their curfew. That means when a chaperone goes to the door, they are checked in, every single person comes and says, "Goodnight." Make sure everybody's in the room, make sure everything is all good, they are all set. Chaperone is all Oxford staff, we will be available 24/7. Chaperone rooms will be at both ends of the hallway of our students. If it is a square, like some hotels, we will be on every side that our students are involved, and we will either be on the ends and in the middle, or right directly between all of the rooms, so that everybody has one of us within a door-reach of their rooms. Disney resorts and parks have their own police. They do have uniformed police officers that are present all day and all night at the resorts. Resorts and parks have security screening, that include bag checks and security technology that is almost identical to what we use here at Oxford. All Disney workers are trained in emergency response, that includes medical emergency and threats. And we are only attending one park per day. In my opinion, that just makes it a much safer environment, plus with doing the challenges every day, I think that makes it better. But not having the students get on multiple buses, to go through security every single time, I feel better having them all in one place for the whole day. So I did tell you that it was a surprise to me when it came through my email, and I thought I was being pranked by Oxford, but I wasn't, because Jordan Hung, a Oxford Class of 2021 graduate- class of 2021 graduate, our Oxford Cup winner that year, whoop-whoop, is working currently at Disney. I am lucky enough and blessed that she's also dating my oldest son. She is down at Disney World currently working as a creative product design intern. She is the one who recommended Oxford for this program. So, when I saw the email come through, and then I thought about it, I emailed her, and I said, "Is this person real?" And she sent me back all the credentials, and she's like, "You have to check this out. This is an incredible opportunity." And if you can read her quote, during her internship, she has been able to work and collaborate with all lines of business within the company, from Imagineering to the frontline cast members. "The heart of Disney is carried in every cast member in ensuring the story stays alive." She's excited for Oxford students to experience a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to truly see how the magic comes alive. She's having a wonderful opportunity, she's learning so much, it's just incredible. So, for our students to also get to meet with her and see where she lives, what she does, and everything like that would be really incredible as well. Thank you for considering us, any questions?
Can I come as a chaperone?
Sure.
So, I'm not going to lead into my vote on this by any means, but I absolutely love this.
Thank you, thank you.
And I was, I wrote it down to bring up, and you already did it, so, I love the fact that you're going to engage with the Disney College Program.
Yeah.
I've had nieces and nephews go through that, and it is hugely beneficial and eye-opening. I would also encourage you to ask them for information on the Disney Institute. So, as continued learning, as they go through college and even into the professional careers, you can schedule and sign up for the Disney Institute and get certifications, which is amazing.
I did their PD this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was wonderful.
Yeah, and it would be great to hear stories on how they like Epic Universe.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. I did point out to Brad Bigelow, so I'll point out to all of you, they do offer staff Disney Imagination Campus experiences as well, just saying.
Hint, nudge, nudge.
There you go.
Any other questions, comments? That was a great presentation, and I really appreciate it. Shout out to Jordan for being way ahead of her time in fulfilling our mission of contributing to a connected community and bringing that to us. I'm very excited for the kids for that one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, Shane, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just real quick, it, it won't require a response, it's not a question. I just, I think this is an extraordinary opportunity for these kids to get out. This technology age, I have two kids, 10 and 12, and they live on devices, so sometimes human interaction and networking is a big problem, I think, these days, so, what an outstanding opportunity for them to go down and have a whole lot of fun while doing it, so, thank you for doing this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Back to the housekeeping items. Item E, we have our OVA course approval. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Move to approve adopting the OVA courses as presented.
Support. Mike Whitney, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, again, we had this presentation last meeting. Someone like to make that motion? Mike Whitney, thank you.
Move to approve adopting the district catalog as presented.
Support. Ann, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G. Anyone like that motion?
I can. Move to approve the appointment of Kimberly Young to the LCA Board of Directors.
Support. Mike Aldred? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one? Shane, thank you.
Sure. Move to approve the appointment of Deborah Blake to the LCA Board of Directors.
Support. Mike Whitney, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item H, Dr. Milligan, would you like to speak to this on the agenda? Thank you.
All right, so, per our policy, when we have an expulsion, and the student has served their time 180 days prior to coming back, there are several procedures that they need to go through in order to be admitted back into the school. Our policy addresses two different procedures. One is for a mandatory expulsion, and that's dictated by the state, typically has to do with any type of weapons that a student might be found with. The other is discretionary, right? So, sometimes it can be behavior between one student and another that's aggressive or violent, it could be a number of things. And so, in 2024, we had an expulsion, and that student is up for reinstatement, and so, it was perceived to be a mandatory, which is why we had invited several of our board members to be a part of the committee, that's a part of our policy. Unfortunately, we failed to do the board appointment piece, and so, we were seeking legal opinion on that, could we move forward with it if it wasn't appointed? In that course of action, Jennifer from Troon helped us better understand that it was not a mandatory, it was a discretionary, and those parameters are very different. So, you still have a committee, you still have a review of the information, however, the decision sits with the superintendent and not the board itself. However, we just, hopefully, we will never need this, because if something's a mandatory expulsion, it means that we had a really serious situation in the school, in any school, but just in case, we wanted to go ahead and be preemptive and have board members appointed who would be willing to serve on that committee, and it is a board decision. A mandatory expulsion reinstatement is a board decision. So, we're here to ask for individuals who might be interested in participating in that committee if, and again, hopefully, never, but just in case, that board members could serve, we need to, by law, we need to.
Just a point of clarification, so, this would be a committee, and they would come to the board with a recommendation? Is that how it would work? Or those two would have-
They would be committee members, so, they would, it's a, it's a large community, a large committee, so, Dr. Williman, we have teacher, we have administrator, we had a parent on it, so, there's a multitude of people on it, and then there would be board representation at that meeting. You discuss all the factors, all the information, you make a recommendation, and then the board members would bring it to the board table for discussion. I don't know if that would require a closed session, because closed sessions typically have to be requested by a parent, so, we'd cross that bridge when we come to it, but-
But they would, so, they would, the committee-
Would make the recommendation-
Would make the recommendation to the board, and then we would make the decision.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I-
Yeah.
Sarah Bath, you're interested?
And additionally, we don't have to do this, this is a preemptive, you know, request of, of Dr. Milligan, that we do it just in case. We can also do it as it comes. We can appoint members if we get into this situation. Obviously, there's going to be turnover in the next couple of years, and hopefully, hopefully not, but in any case, we do, we don't have to do this if anyone is uncomfortable with it, I just wanted to-
So, here's the challenge, there is one minor challenge in that there are very strict timelines. So, once we receive, and it's not just Oxford students, we might get a transfer student that was mandatorily expelled from their school district, and once that expulsion, they might have moved into Oxford, we get the request, and within 10 days, we have to have everything turned around, which may or may not align with a board meeting. So, that's where it gets a little tricky. So, I think better safe than sorry, I guess.
And so, would this recommendation be, I mean, one of our regular, like, but I mean, if you want to be preemptive, right, this would be like the beginning when we do appointments, committee appointments?
So, this committee only convenes if we have a situation-
But I'm saying, we're preemptive now, the recommendation would be that we're preemptive every year, correct?
It could be.
I mean, that's, I imagine, right?
Yeah, that would make good sense to-
If we're doing it now, it wouldn't make sense for-
Right, every January.
-next year not to continue that.
Representation, kind of like the safety committee.
And I know, I know that it's just in, in if we need it-
Yeah.
-but it would, it would make sense to me, I guess.
I'd be willing to serve.
Okay, so far, we have two.
Yeah, I'd be willing to serve.
Three. Was this written, excuse me, from Troon? Did they give you this language? Because I'm just confused on the policy, I'm trying to read through quickly again. That the board-
5206?
Yeah, the board will appoint a reinstatement committee consisting of two board members, one administrator, one teacher, and one parent. We don't have to, do we have to spell out the rest of the committee members in this? Okay.
Just the board members.
Okay. So, how are they chosen?
How the board members chosen?
The administrator, the teacher, and the parent.
It would depend on the case, right? So, you would want, if it's internal, you would want people that know the student that can give insight into that.
So, we don't have to take action to appoint them?
No.
Okay. Okay, that clarified. Anyone else interested? So far, we have-
I would say as a backup.
Three. Okay.
No, I was going to ask that, so, you said it's potentially, it could be like a 10-day turnaround or something of that nature. So, and I know we're just talking about if this happens, but, like, so, 10 days, the committee has to convene, or does, within 10 days, it have to come to the board?
Let me do this, so, Dr. Williman, I know you've been chomping at the bit.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious to try, because to Mike's point, do we need alternates? Do we need, like, what does that, what does that look like?
So, in the event that we have a mandatory permanent expulsion, from the time we receive the petition for reinstatement, we have 10 days to convene the committee, that if it's a mandatory, it's board-appointed. And then, from that point, on day 10, we then, and we notify them, day eight, whatever the day is that we notify that the committee has been convened, then we have 10 school days to hold the reinstatement meeting. There's a lot of 10 days, then 10 days, then, at the next regularly-scheduled board meeting, so that could be two weeks from now, like, if we held one tomorrow, the next regularly-scheduled board meeting is two weeks from then, then, the recommendation from the reinstatement committee would be brought to the board. And then, there's certain questions, and it's in, we're discussing 5206C.01, just so everyone that doesn't have it in front of them knows for some light reading later. There are some certain, there are certain things that need to be addressed as part of that, so, there is a form they fill out for the reinstatement proposal, but the factors that are listed in that policy are loosely based on the seven factors with some additional things layered in. What Dr. Milligan and I have looked at is addressing first the seven factors and then leaning into this. So, looking at the risk of harm to other students or district personnel, that aligns already with the seven factors for consideration. The extent to which reinstatement could create a risk of district liability and individual liability for the board or district personnel, the student's age and maturity, the school record before the incident that caused the expulsion, the student's attitude concerning the incident that caused the expulsion, the student's behavior since the expulsion, and the student's prospects for remediation. And if the parent, if the parent was the one who filed for reinstatement, what their opinions are and how they're willing to work with the situation. So, a lot of this already, and this comes directly from the state of Michigan as well, which is how it aligns with the seven factors, but with all of that, that would have to be clearly explained to anything that came to the board, and that would be part of what the committee would do, which would be myself, two board members, a school administrator, a teacher, and a parent of a current Oxford Community School student.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
What was the policy number again? Okay. Thank you.
All right, while we have Dr. Williman, any other questions or clarification on the policy and the procedure itself? Okay. If anybody would like to make a motion, you can go ahead, or we can keep having discuss- discussion. I'd move to appoint Shane Gibson and Ann Atchison to the reinstatement committee. Mike Aldred, support, thank you. All right, discussion on that one.
I personally think Shane, with his background experience, and Ann as well, would be valuable members to that committee, and bring back to the board comprehensive analysis of the issue at hand. Those were my thoughts in going into that, it is nothing against any other board members who expressed interest, those were the two that I would like to see.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, this is a roll-call vote, and Mike, you are acting secretary.
Got it. Ms. Kemp-Journey?
Yes.
Mike Whitney?
Yes.
Shane Gibson?
Yes.
Summers absent? Atchison?
Yes.
Mike Aldred, yes.
One more.
I'm so sorry, President McDonough. What say you?
Yes.
Thanks, Mike. All right, item seven, thank you both, by the way, for volunteering for that, appreciate it. Item seven, Mr. Fitzgerald coming back for our boiler bid award.
Good evening again, this is the first reading for, it's a Clear Lake Boiler Elementary Replacement. Clear Lake Building has two boilers that are approaching 20 years old. One is at the moment not functioning, the other's on its last leg, so, these are, both the boilers out there are known as Raypak boilers, and this is a replacement for a modern version of it. So, we are purchasing it from a vendor, requesting purchasing from the vendor Johnson Wood LLC, we're compliant with our board policy 3301 and state, and state regs. They are the low bid, low bid provider, and happened, they happen to have this pricing based on a cooperative contract as well, so, we're kind of double-covered from the perspective of the state regs. So, we will be requesting at the September 9th board meeting to authorize, that the board authorize the administration to purchase the boiler from Johnson Wood LLC for $38,180, and for an additional $3,900 for contingency, for a total of $42,080 of authority. Any questions?
Questions? Shane?
Just real quick, the $42,000 going further down to the, I think it was the quote for them, is, is, how, I guess my question is, how do we plan on paying for it? Meaning, meaning if, are we going to be paying with, like, a check? Are we going to be paying with credit card? Are we going to be paying, like, how would we plan on paying this?
Probably ACH to them.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because I saw in a few of these that they had 3%, 4% added for any credit card payment. I just wanted to make sure.
As a practice, we don't, if, if the credit card requires an additional fee out of it, we won't use that process.
Perfect, okay. Perfect, okay.
Any other questions, comments? Just one more that I had with the, the quote, it did say it was only good for 15 days. I'm assuming you've already spoken to them because the quote date was from June. They will still honor this price until September. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We will be voting on that one at the next meeting. So if any additional questions arise, feel free to send those into the Q and A. All right. Unscheduled public comment. Justin? Marissa Prince.
Is the, is the new policy in effect or no? Is our new, it is? It's okay. I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to.
Just got my phone.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Very good.
Just real, it's quick anyway. So just on SETSEG, real quick. I was disappointed to see that we renewed with SETSEG, especially at the, I think it was like a 25% premium increase over last year. And I do, I want to thank the community members that have pushed us to switch insurance companies. I'm going to read an excerpt from an article in the Detroit News where Madison Baldwin's mother, her lovely mother Nicole, was interviewed about her offer, acceptance of the death benefit offer for Madison. Oxford Schools attorney Tim Mullins said the offer to the families before the Sixth Circuit decision was $1 million each. It was lowered to $500,000 after that. "We always try to reach a reasonable resolution of a disputed claim," Mullins said. "We are pleased to have been able to do so at this point." Then Oxford cuts them a check for over $600,000 and renews the policy. So I don't know about you guys, I've had the same insurer for my family, USAA, for over 20 years. And I keep them because I trust them and because they take care of us. SETSEG has not taken care of us, but Oxford Schools keeps them. And I don't want my tax dollars going to SETSEG anymore after what they've done. And I don't think any of you guys should either. So the board has dropped the ball. We've had time, we have had time to resource this insurance company and we haven't done it. And I think the only reason we're doing it now is because you're being pushed to do it. So this cannot happen soon enough. And my expectation is that this happens quickly. We hire a new company, we fire SETSEG publicly, we speak out about all the things they did wrong. Mullins, we never see Mullins again, set foot in any of our buildings. He's not, he does not work for the school district anymore. And there's some accountability there. And we hire a new insurer that aligns with the values of our community and aligns with the values of our school district. And so I'd like to see that happen quickly. And I'm appreciative to the finance committee for finally making this happen because this is a step towards healing and towards recovery that should have already happened. So it's happening now, I suppose, but not soon enough. And the damage is done. And I think it's really unfortunate that Madison's mom felt the need to explain herself in this article. And I think the quote from Tim Mullins in the article is really insensitive and inappropriate. And I'm disappointed that the district didn't make their own comment from our own, our own people. So that's it.
Thank you, Marissa. Item nine, we have our scheduled activities. We have Labor Day break, Student Count Day coming up on October 1st, and our next board meeting on September 9th. Any administrative clarification, Dr. Milligan? No? Any final board comments? Seeing none? It is 8:50 and this meeting is adjourned.